The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I think we got a good proud, good crowd here tonight. That's always good to have some people. First item on the event agenda today is entertain a motion to approve the general agenda as post posted and sent to the media for 24 hours prior to the meeting.
So moved.
I second.
And a motion by Mr. Blanford, second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, we have our city leader shape ship statement. The city of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meetings, we expect that all of participants will act in a respectful manage and consistent with these principles. Thank you. Next item is the council workshop. We had one on February 3rd and February 10th. I won't read them, but they are available online if anybody needs to review them at all. So we'll move on next to public comment. We do have one public comment registered in advance. Do you know Mr. Christopher McCoolenich? Is he on Zoom?
He's actually on the late.
Oh, is he coming?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because I believe he's around 6:10.
Okay. All right, we can go ahead. Let's see, just come in.
Hello. I am nervous and not very good with public speaking, so we're going to try our best. All right?
Just state your name for us, please.
Crystal Wolfers.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I wrote a little something. I would like to start by addressing the statement made by Mayor Birdsall on February 10th, 2025, that Mr. Hodge's comments can be seen as distasteful to some. He was exercising his right to free speech. Though it is correct that everyone is entitled to free speech, it does not allot them from freedom of consequence. I would also ask that each member of council take a strong look at the city leadership endeavor that is presented at every meeting. And ask themselves if the comments made by Mr. Hodge on February 3rd, 2025 align with said statement. And I would like to read parts of that statement. The city of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. I do not feel that the statements made on February 3rd, 2025 by Mr. Hodge embody any of this mission statement. Statements such as these enact to divide in our community. Though Mr. Hodge is allowed to have his personal beliefs outside of this room, those beliefs, when they enter a public forum, do incite an issue. I would also like to state that though a few city council members have come out to state their disagreement with the comments made on February 3rd, by not addressing them at the moment that they were spoken, it is alarming and it promotes that sort of belief. And it also goes against the city leadership endeavor. The fact that this was not upheld for the citizens of this community is alarming. That is all. And I am shaking.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who would like to sit up to the podium and state your name for us, please?
My name is Jeanne Fay and I live in Ward 3. I've lived in Hampton now for three years. I am also here to address comments made by Councilman Bill Hodge at the February 3rd City Council Workshop. City Council members are representatives of the community in which they serve, especially of the ward in which they were elected. This includes everyone who lives in that ward. This includes everyone who lives in that community. City Council members are not judge, jury, and executioner, or in this case, assistants to immigration, customs, and enforcement agents. According to the 2020 census, Hampton's population was 4,337 residents. 28.8% of that number are Hispanic or Latino. That amounts to 1,249 residents. Out of our total population, less than 10% were foreign born, 425 residents. This means that only 25 residents were born outside the U.S., not that 425 are here illegally. Whether every one of these residents has legal citizenship status in the U.S. or not, they are residents of and therefore citizens of Hampton. These residents bring value to this community. They live, work, own businesses, own homes, and pay taxes in this community. Without them, this community would die. They help keep our industries open. They work on our farms. They make and serve our food in their restaurants, and it's damn good food, too. Their children attend our schools. Hampton must attract new businesses and industry to thrive. Do you really think that will happen if there is not enough housing, infrastructure, and workers to support them? These residents build those homes, work on those roads and infrastructure projects, and are employees of those businesses. I don't see residents who look like me or those who sit on this council jumping up and down to fill these types of positions. There is a pervasive attitude among the young people in this country that manual labor of any kind is beneath them. They don't want these jobs. We see it all the time. Someone might agree to an interview but not show up for it. Or they might be offered a position but never show up for their first day. They don't call either. They just don't want to work. Our Hispanic and Latino neighbors do. But I digress. If any members of this council don't want to represent all the residents of your ward and of this community, you should consider resigning your seat on the council. The residents of Hampton deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment this evening? Okay, I'm hearing any. You got one? All right.
My name is Jocelyn Stock and I spoke on Monday and I'd like to speak again to some comments following up with what Mr. Hodge said, both on February 3rd and on February 10th. When Hodge made his comment on February 3rd about giving names to ICE, it was heavily implied that he would give them names of Hampton residents whose skin tone is different than his and mine, because those residents must, one, be here without documentation, and, two, have committed a crime of high enough level that the current administration is seeking to deport them. When confronted with that implication on February 10th, Hodge seemed to double down that he meant any skin tone originated from any country. Now, because Hodge does not know me, my citizenship status, or my criminal background just by looking at me, I want to make sure he doesn't give my name to ICE. So how about armbands, so everyone knows the citizenship status of their neighbors? Red, white, and blue for those with full U.S. citizenship, whether by birthright citizenship or naturalized citizen. Green, for those with a green card. DACA, which stands for Delayed Action for Childhood Arrivals, is represented by a monarch butterfly so naturally their armbands would be orange and black. White for political asylum seekers. A different color for those who hold visas. You may have noticed, a few colors aren't used. Yellow and pink. Those colors were used for armbands in the 1930s and 1940s to identify people. Yellow with a star of David and pink with an upside down triangle. Those people didn't fit the ideal or mold in Germany, and that was the sense I got from Mr. Hodge's comments. Closer to home, armbands were used as a form of protest. Students in Des Moines Public Schools wore black armbands to protest the U.S. involvement in the Vietnam War. That is my intent today by bringing up armbands, to protest a city council member using racist language during a city council meeting. Just to be clear, I am using irony and not intending that this be a real idea. I don't want my words misconstrued or taken out of context. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, if not, we will move on. Thank you, everybody. Some pause. I hate to jump right onto you, but would you like to make some public comment today?
Yeah, sorry. It was an interesting drive down here, so.
That was close. All right, just please state your name for us.
Yes, my name is Christopher Misslinich. I reside in Decorah, Iowa. And do you need address, even though I'm not from here? Okay, so I would first like to start out with saying good evening to yourself, Mayor and City Council. Again, my name is Councilman Christopher Misslinich, and I proudly serve the city of Decorah, Iowa. Over the past couple of years, Hampton has become a second home to me, and I have come to appreciate this community and the people in it. That's why it was deeply disheartening to hear a recent comment made at a previous meeting by an elected official suggesting that if INS/ICE were to return, the police chief should send them his way because he could provide them with names of individuals. What was also disappointing was seeing that no other council member spoke up or challenged this statement when it was made by Councilmember Bill Hodge. I do acknowledge that some members of your council addressed these comments in a later work session. However, the time to do so was in the moment. When these words were spoken, silence in that moment could be perceived as complicity. And it is in those critical instances that leadership must be demonstrated. I also recognize that Mayor Steve Birdsall acknowledged Councilmember Hodge's words as distasteful. However, he also stated that Councilmember Hodge was expressing his right to free speech and that he would not ask for his resignation at this time. While free speech is a fundamental right, words spoken by those in positions of public trust carry weight and consequence. Elected officials must be mindful that their words reflect on the integrity and values of the entire governing body. I think this is also especially concerning because the Hampton City Council has adopted the following city leadership statement. The city of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. The actions and words presented in the above-mentioned scenario do not align with these principles. As a duly elected individual myself, I want to offer a friendly reminder that manipulative government exists to serve the people, all people, regardless of party lines or personal affiliations. It is our duty as public officials to lead with integrity, fairness, and a commitment to the well-being of our entire communities. Comments like these create fear and division rather than fostering trust and inclusivity. I encourage this council to remain committed, transparency, fairness, and government that truly represents and protects all constituents. The words spoken in this council chamber matter, and they should reflect the values of inclusivity, integrity, and public service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, let me ask one more time, any more? If not, we'll move out and move on. We have a public hearing tonight for the authorization of the loan agreement and the issuance of notes. Being the time for and place for a public hearing in regard to the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder, I'm Mayor Steve Birdstall. Open this hearing, the hearing at 6:16. Mr. Dent.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, as the mayor stated, a hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes in order to provide funds to pay the cost of rehabilitation of the four and six First Street Northwest properties for essential corporate purposes. And the notice of the proposed action by the council to institute proceedings for the authorization of the loan agreement and the issuance of the notes had been published to the provisions of Section 384.24A, 384.25 Code of Iowa. We have not received any written objections filed by any resident at City Hall, and now is the opportunity for any resident to publicly state your opposition or favor of this during this public hearing.
Mr. Palmer?
I just, I read the other day that it's sad we have to do this because somebody just walked away from some buildings downtown, and it's up to us if we don't save them. It's going to collapse and it's just going to make our downtown look really, really poor. I feel also bad for the city of Actley. They've got a whole block with chain link fence all around the whole block. On the other side, I just saw Clear Lake approved their $350,000 revolving loan fund to help the new bowling alley and entertainment center they've got there. It should be nice to be able to, you know, do something like that for Hampton, but instead we're strapped with fixing somebody else's problems. So anyway, it's an investment I feel we have to make. Unfortunately, it's just going to take some time and some money to fix it. Something like that.
Thank you. Any other input, comments for the public hearing? Not hearing any. We will then close this public hearing at 6:50, 6:18. Move on to our next item. Old business, we have none. New business, we have none. Next item is to entertain a motion to approve the claims as submitted by staff in the amount of $430,067.94.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer. Who's the second, who's the, I'm sorry, the second over here?
Barry.
Motion. Okay, Lamos. Thank you.
I've got a question.
Yep, go ahead.
You know, I went through the claims, but I didn't, I didn't write it down till now. The Exxon Enterprise equipment, what was that, was that for? $11,408.
That's mine.
Okay, is that cameras?
It's car cameras, yes.
Okay.
That's paid for by the bark of my grant, so we'll get that back on the other end.
Okay. And I noticed the painting for the pool, it was done last fall, and we're just getting the bill for it. Are they just that far behind?
I don't know. We didn't ask them. They may have, they may have wanted the revenue in 2024.
Sure.
Or, excuse me, 2025. I don't know.
Okay.
We were happy to, we were hoping they'd forget about it.
Thank you.
I would like to comment, too. I also reviewed the claims. Maybe this next year sometime, and I know we're busy as can be right now, but if we can have a serious conversation with Merritt Computers up in Clear Lake or Mason City about getting CenturyLink switched over to something else, and that bill's pretty high. And if we can get our VoIP phones put in and something like that, just at least have them give us a cost estimate of what would be, because that's pretty high, especially for our outline. You know, we've got, I see at the airport, you've got Woolstock Mutual. That could be a voice over IP phone, just like that, and would be a lot cheaper than CenturyLink.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Yeah, but just sometime. I'm sure that Merritt does those, those projects, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comment, discussion around the claims? If not, we'll go take it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item up is the Resolution 2025-05, of resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation. Mr. Dent.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas pursuant to notice published as required by law, the city council has held a public meeting and hearing upon the proposal to institute proceedings for the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes for essential corporate purposes in order to provide funds to pay the cost of acquisition, restoration, demolition of abandoned, dilapidated, or dangerous buildings, structures, properties, or the abatement of a nuisance, and has considered the extent of objections received from the residents or property owners as to the proposed issuance of notes. And following action is here, is now considered to be in the best interest of the city and residents thereof. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Hampton, Iowa. This council does hereby institute proceedings and take additional action for the authorization and issuance in the manner required by law of not to exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes for the foregoing essential corporate purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, any discussion around that? Pretty much beat that one up. With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-05.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hodge, second by Mr. Palmer. This will be a roll coat, roll coat, roll, yeah, roll call, make vote. Mr. Hodge.
Aye.
Mr. Lamos.
Aye.
Mr. Davies.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer's.
Aye.
Mr. Greifey.
Aye.
Mr. Blanford.
Aye.
Right, as a resolution, resolution is approved. Next item we have is Resolution 2025-06. This is the resolution authorizing the issuance of the taxable general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025A. Mr. Dent.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the issuer is in need of funds to pay costs of the acquisition, restoration, or demolition of abandoned, dilapidated, dangerous buildings, structures, properties, or the abatement of a nuisance known as a project, it's deemed necessary and advisable that taxable general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025A, in the amount not to exceed $700,000 be issued. Whereas the city council has taken such acts as are necessary to authorize issuance of the notes, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hampton, Iowa, authorization of the issuance taxable general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2025A, in the amount not to exceed 700,000 shall be issued pursuant to provisions of Iowa Code Section 3 to 4.24A and 384.25 for the purpose covered by the hearing. Section 2 levy of annual tax, for the purpose of providing funds for the principal and interest as required under Chapter 760, 76.2, there is levied for each future year the following direct annual tax upon all property, taxable property in the city of Hampton, Iowa. Amount, first year fiscal year '26, $167,708. Fiscal year '27, $167,310. Fiscal year '28, $167,860. Fiscal year '29, $167,825. Fiscal year '30, $167,205. Principal and interest coming due at any time when the proceeds of the tax are in hand insufficient to pay the amount due shall promptly be paid when due from current funds available for that purpose, and reimbursement must be made. Based on the terms of the future sale of the notes to be issued, the council will file an amendment to this resolution with county auditor. Certified copy of this resolution shall be filed with the county auditor of County of Franklin, State of Iowa, who shall pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 76.2 levy, assess and collect the tax in the same manner as other taxes, and when collected, these taxes shall be used for the purpose, only for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the notes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion around this one? Bringing down, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-06. I move we approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Davies, second by Ms. Greifey. It's also roll fault, roll cold, beer, beer, getting better. Mr. Blanford.
Aye.
Ms. Greifey.
Aye.
Mr. Davies.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Lamos.
Aye.
And Mr. Hodge.
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This will include approving the minutes that is drafted from the Thursday, January 23rd, 2025 session. Includes schedule of the next regular session as Thursday, February 27th, 2025, at 6 o'clock PM. Approve alcohol licensing renewals for the following Dollar General, number 2383, 910, 510, 77 Central Avenue East, or West Hampton. Hy-Vee, 808 Fourth Street Southeast Hampton, Iowa. Get and Go Convenience Store, number 9319, Central Avenue East Hampton. And approve ownership updates for the following alcohol license, Dollar General, number 282383, 8810, 8510, Central Avenue West Hampton. And Hampton Family Dollar, number 32965, 4117, Central Avenue East, or West. Entertainer motion to approve.
So moved.
Second it.
Mr. Palmer, this motion, second by Ms. Greifey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us down to our staff reports. Chief Morrison.
Yeah, I just have a couple things to update you on since the Monday workshop meeting. We had, on the nuisance side of things, five municipal citations that are written and waiting to be served. We're looking for court orders to get those properties cleaned up. We had court for today was continued till February 27th, so we'll work on those later. The snoreness was in place yesterday, the plows were out, and 13 citations were written. And just as a reminder, to sign up for the alerts by texting HamptonIA to 67283, and there's cards at the end of the room or at the police department. We gave out several of those today. People were appreciative of them, and I think it's been working. In years past, we've had 80 tickets. Now we're seeing 13 or so, so I think that's a move in the right direction. Officers completed alcohol buys today. All but one business passed. One failed, that was Crossroads, and we will be in contact with ABD on tomorrow. Reference them. And then the last thing I got is the Police Citizens Academy starts February 26, 2025. We currently have six people signed up. We're hoping to get hopefully six more, so if anybody's interested, please sign up and get your application into us within the next couple of days. That's all I have unless there's questions.
Any questions for Mr. Morrison, Mr. Palmer?
Many more have been done on the glass pipe ordinance situation.
So I was in contact with the state, and they are, there's some confusion as to who is going to be in charge of enforcement. The state put in that law into effect where it can't be visible by anybody under the age of 21, meaning it's going to have to be in a back room or whatever. But they made the law without the enforcement portion of it, so it's trying to catch up to that. They think it's going to land in the tobacco. They think it's gonna land in the tobacco section, and that guy has come talked to me last week, and so I think he's gonna work on enforcement of it, but it's kind of up in the air right now, but that'll happen sooner than later.
Do you know how many places in town sell those?
Uh, one that I know of.
Okay. Mr. Lamos, the cameras, are those body cams or dash cams?
No, they're in-car camera system. Our current one is old and we currently share with the sheriff's office, and we're on their server, but they moved to a different system which kind of left us on an island. A couple of them don't work, and so we're trying to get those fixed sooner than later. We've been kind of borrowing pieces and parts from other departments trying to keep the ones we have operational until they get here.
The new ones, will they, will they film outside the car plus inside the car?
They, they have a forward-facing camera and a rear-facing camera, and then they will automatically download when we pull up in front of the, the building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions from Chief Morrison?
I don't have a question, I just want to thank you for getting Coonley Apartments cleaned up again.
Yeah, thank you.
Again.
We, it's been a struggle because they're under new management, so, but we got ahold of them. Doug and I worked with that last week and, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, it's been a long day. As the chief mentioned, there was 13 parking tickets issued last night, there were also five vehicles towed. We also have a second system forecasted for tomorrow into Saturday, and then some high winds this weekend, so looks like another round right, right around the corner. We had a couple minor breakdowns, I think the blower, we fixed on the go, a piece of the tractor, we fixed on the go, and I think one pickup tire that we had to have patched because of a flat tire. We were a little short-staffed, as you guys may be aware, flu's going around, so that's hit and a few other odds and ends, so we did that with some short staff today. However, I think they did a really good job, we have new faces, new routes, new things, so it was a great, it was a great snow for us to experience. I think it was a great learning curve for some of the newer guys, so I was happy with how they performed today. I want to put a reminder out, Councilman Palmer brought this up to me the other day, he had some questions as to why the plows weren't out when we had about a three-quarter to a one-inch snowfall. Well, right now, we have a policy that says soon as we get two inches is what prompts us to go. To me, that's fiscally responsible, it has been this way ever since I've been here in the last 20 years. It was here before me, and, but I do believe in it, and that's how we operate. If people do have questions about those operations, have them call me, please. The water plant project continues, Henkel's been very busy, they're doing the plumbing on the new filter, and it's, it's big pipe, so it's, it's really impressive to watch that and how it's unfolding. The, I believe the new control panel has been installed, obviously not everything is in that yet because we've got to get all the plumbing sorted, but a very intricate project and, but it's moving forward, so that's great. This week, the hospital had a large water leak to the rear of their property. Staff was actually on site even though it was theirs. They had, I believe they had morts come out and repaired that leak, it was a very big one, so we did have staff on site to make sure things were going well and then also to inspect the repair. We've had many recent funerals, my gosh, the cemetery has been very busy in the last month or two, unfortunately. We are going to, you're gonna see some claims coming through probably in the next few weeks for a couple of furnaces. The one at the old wastewater heated shop, that one was original, and then one in the very street department north shop, I'm assuming that one's original because they're both well over 20 years old and both have been rebuilt. And actually, when we started getting some quotes, it appeared that the parts and labor were gonna be about what a new furnace was gonna cost, so there, I believe, were right around four thousand dollars for the one and maybe a little bit more for the other one, but those claims will be coming through, just want to give you a heads up. And both those, both places that require these furnaces, we house equipment that need to be in a heated shop. And then we received our court order from, from court last week for that 321 Fifth Street Southwest, so we'll be continuing to move forward with the demo process, you know, first thing is gonna be get that asbestos testing done and then abatement, of course, and then utilities have already been contacted to get those disconnected, and we're just gonna keep moving forward and try to take care of those issues that you guys alluded to earlier, so we're just gonna keep rolling and doing what we have. Other than that, any questions or concerns?
Mr. Lamos?
Yeah, I got a couple. What size main was that at the hospital that was leaking?
I believe it was an eight, and I believe it fed the, a fire hydrant, it's part of their fire protection back there, but it was a big leak, but I'm pretty sure it was an eight that fed that.
Plastic or duct tape?
I don't know, I, I wasn't the one doing the inspection, Andy did, we just had some conversations about it. I did stop out originally, kind of gave him some advice about locates and a few other odds and ends. There's a lot of stuff to locate back there, it was a busy, busy excavation.
The stone at the old wastewater plant, what's the plan to get the other half out of there?
Well, we, we're, we're working on that. We actually have Iowa Wall Saw that's been in town, and there is a, basically, it looks like a hallway. It's about six foot tall, five foot wide, and very thick concrete, and we're getting that cut flush, and then we'll go in, get the rest of that wall moved out of there. There's also, I can't remember the name of the, basically it was the drive, the hydraulic drive for the trickling filter, which is really nice because it's huge and it's heavy and it's stainless steel, and we're hoping to scrap that to get a big chunk of this Iowa saw bill, Iowa Wall Saw Bill that's coming, to help pay for some of that. But anyway, once that's done, we'll get in there with more equipment and just keep bringing it out of there. We're getting close to what we feel we need for the pad out at, out at the new burn site, however, you just never know, you know, we might need more of that, so we're stockpiling that on site. One of the other things we're going to do with that, that we're planning to do is to cover the old drying beds with that stone to make a nice pad to park equipment and different things on.
What's the cost of cutting that wall?
Um, I believe it was twenty thousand. Yeah.
What fund does that come out of?
Uh, I think we're wastewater.
I think, part of it out of the compost fees or the funds we reserve for the brush site.
Uh, the, if we have our street projects under budget this year, I'd like to see lease a miller, a little milling machine for a skid steer, and mill those, those bumps around town. They're like speed bumps, some of them are worse. If we could just mill those like the DOT does, Highway 65 and 3, and then do a patch over the top of them, instead of sawing it and digging it down two foot, putting cement in it, all that hassle.
Yep, yep.
You know.
I, I agree with you. Matter of fact, just recently I was researching Marketplace since we found such a good deal on a sweeper. I actually saw one of those mills come up on Marketplace the other day for about, I think it was like forty-five hundred bucks, but it fit on a Bobcat with, with kind of a high flow. Our Bobcat that we have at the wastewater plant is pretty small, and our other one, but we can always borrow from the county if we need something bigger. But yeah, I agree, I think trying to find a mill to maybe help some of that, we can look into that.
Thank you.
Did appreciate getting back to me on the, on the depth of the snow situation. I was in Actley, Iowa Falls, Wellsburg, Eldora, they hadn't run their plows either, they had more snow than that. I'm sure they did it overnight like, last night like we did.
Sure.
But, you know, of course, everybody's brave online, you've got four people spoke tonight and 300 comments on, on the internet, but, you know, the people told me, well, I just might have to run a city council to change that policy. Well, you're gonna run for city council so your street gets plowed first or what? But anyway, it's just, you know, all those things, but I do appreciate that now, and now we know, and I can say, you know, the, you know, the first thing they always want to know is to complain about something. I said, I've never run a snowplow, and micromanaging just doesn't work all that well, so.
There's a lot of social media warriors out there nowadays.
Yes, yes, there are, especially, you know, recently, and anyway, that's all I got on that now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunt.
Continuing to finalize the budget, and the next step will be the property tax levy hearing. We'll set a date for a hearing at our meeting on February 27th, we'll set a date. Working with ISG and Terracan on the next step for the 4 and 6 First Street Northwest property, the next step is asbestos abatement, but we have to have ISG or Terracan draft design specs so that we can, potential bidders for asbestos removal will know the extent of what they're getting into. So that's kind of where we are with that. Also, recently reviewing terms of a proposed 28E agreement with the Iowa DNR on the sewer connection to the city. When that terms are put together, then I'll bring that in front of the City Council for discussion. Any questions?
Mr. Hodge.
Um, when will the time be up for us to do the reburial out to the cemetery? We had to wait two years for, to find it?
Yeah, I think, I think it was a two-year wait, I'm not sure, I have to check, Bill.
Okay. One more question if I could.
Yeah.
There was a gentleman here, on South Federal, when you get out there on the gravel, where the water was coming over the road, did we ever go out there and make them ditches deeper?
I, Doug, can you answer that? Doug is no better than me, Bill.
No, not yet, Bill, we have not done any ditch work out there, however, what we did do was the county actually did a, a project where they did some rehabilitation to a secondary road that they had that was gravel, where they implemented a product into that, and we're kind of waiting to see if that wouldn't be something that we would also incorporate with possibly doing the grading, getting that set right, but then also looking at some ditch work out there yet. We're not done looking at that by any means, we know we got some work to do out there, but what the county did is holding up really well, it's an investment, so we're looking at numbers and different things of that nature, so, yeah, that's where we're at, we're still kind of in a holding pattern a little bit.
Any further, no? Don't hear anything more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council reports, I just randomly assigned a number, assigned, assigned numbers today, so, Mr. Palmer, you're up.
Okay, yeah, I do appreciate the, the four people who came up and spoke. It takes a lot of guts because you're working at somebody you don't agree with, and, and you're speaking out, and like I said, it takes a lot of, a lot of guts. A lot of people online can comment, though, 300 people can comment on a post, but it must not mean that much because they don't show up right here and use their real voice to talk at the podium where it counts, so I appreciate those people who've spoken. Don't forget, Tuesday night at 6:29 PM, at Pit Row Pub, we'll be having Tupperware Bingo to benefit the local cancer society, so get your daubers out and buy a couple of cards and play some bingo and win some Tupperware and help out the local cancer society all at the same time, so that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lamos?
No comment.
All right, thank you. Ms. Greifey.
I always have a comment, you know I do.
Of course I do.
Um, just going back, and everybody pretty much knows how I feel about the comments from the workshop, so I'm not gonna rehash that. I would like to address the onliners that have accused me of choosing illegal immigrants over our own citizens. They're missing the point, their thinking is much too narrow. I am not choosing illegal immigrants over our citizens, I am choosing to protect the Latino community from blatant racism, period. And wanting us to, and I'm sorry, I did apologize that I didn't jump on Barry the minute those words left his mouth, but according to the open meeting rules, we're not allowed to. So we were silent, but also initially I was totally shocked. Now, I would like to say about the comments that Barry has made to me, he did come into my, Bill, I'm sorry, Barry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The comments that he made to me that I found inappropriate, he did come into my place of business and sincerely apologized, and I deeply appreciate that. I would like to see a sincere apology from him to the Latino community. I felt like his apology at workshop was apology, not apology. The building, Rick's Pharmacy, I feel very, very good about stabilizing that building and saving it. Once you start tearing down buildings in your downtown district, there's no going back. We can't afford any more gaping holes in our downtown, so I feel very good about that. I think that is about it, I just wanted to let you know, I've been busy with a lot of chamber things, we do have our annual chamber appreciation, what did we change that name to, appreciation celebration, coming up March 22nd, it's gonna be a great time, everybody's welcome to attend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davies.
Yeah, I also want to thank everyone that spoke at the public comment, I really appreciate hearing your opinions on that. This week I participated in a very good housing committee meeting along with City Manager Dunt and the mayor and Kelsey, and I think, looking forward to getting out some information on that, that's working with Iowa State Extension. I just, prior to this meeting, attended a tourism board meeting, participated in that also. We considered eight different grants tonight, so there's lots of activities and things being planned to look forward to, that's really exciting. And then this week I did sign up for the Spring Main Street Iowa Conference, that's March 5th and 6th in Jefferson, Iowa, and I'll be attending that through my position as interim director at the chamber. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hodge?
I have no comment at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Blanford.
Just a couple of things here, just wanted to thank Doug on the snow removal efforts, I know with the aging equipment, it's kind of tough to keep things going, so you guys got a good crew and good mechanics keeping that stuff going, so appreciate your efforts there. Mark, appreciate you having that snow ordinance alert system, like you said, letting a lot more people know rather than waking up to a ticket or having their vehicle towed, it's not very much fun, so thanks for keeping that going and everything for the citizens of Hampton, so.
All right, thank you. Mayor Report, if you can be patient with me, I'll get through this. I've, I've made some notes that I want to go through this evening. I start by saying that I've, I've had diversity training throughout the 26 years that I was at my real job, so I've had, I understand it, I know what, what it's about and how it needs to be handled. So just a couple of things that I found out, found, it says, the question is why is embracing diverser, diversity cruel, truth of crucial? Well, it creates cultural understanding, engage with the diverse cultures helps us understand and appreciate different ways of life. By learning about others, we can build a more inclusive environment that fosters mutual respect, which is part of our endeavor, and acceptance. It also enhances our reputation, and embracing diversity improves repert, reputation. It also enhances our reputation, and embracing this diversity improves repertaining, reputation of individuals and businesses. It demonstrates a commitment to inclusiveness, inclusiveness, that's a tough one. You, inclusiveness, yeah, can't get the Y in there, and equality, which can build probably positive relations, constrict, ships within the community. And it also promotes societal, societal harmony. It reduces tensions and prejudice. When communicates, when communities embrace their differences, it leads to a more peaceful coexist, coexist, coexistence and contributes to more cohesive, cohesive society. I've said that once, but I had practice. Next, next thing I put together was, well, how do we embrace diverse, diversity? Be respectful, first and most, first most. Show respect for, for individuals' backgrounds, cultural, cultures, and beliefs. Avoid making, making assumptions or judgments based on stereotypes. Encourage participation. Invite and encourage people from various backgrounds to engage in our activities and our discussions. This fossils, it fosters inclusion and provides, and provides opportunities for everybody. Communicate openly. This is open to me, come to the meetings. Engage in open and honest communication with others. This helps to build trust, another part of our endeavor, our endeavor, and, and, and understanding, understanding across different groups. Master your inclusive social skills. Develop social skills that promote inclusivity, such as active listening, empathy, and respectful Reflect on your treatment of others. Regular assess, assess why, how you treat people from different backgrounds. Strive to be fair, another principle, and equitable in all your interactions. Be a vocal advocate. Use your voice to promote, to promote diversity and inclusion. Sharing your experiences and support effort creates a more equitable society. And the last thing I added myself, just be a friend. Let's try that. Most of you that know me, I like, I like to be positive because it doesn't get you anywhere if you don't, so I think, I like to think of myself as a positive person. In fact, even when I slipping, find myself slipping into a negative mind step, I'm pretty out, I'm positive that I'm being negative. So I've got to find a way out of that so that I can get back to the positive. Positive people provide positive outcomes. We can't move forward if we're living in the past, past. I certainly hope that we have all learned a valuable lesson from the situation that we've had going right now and before. I believe that in our positions, we are, we are in our positions because we want to do our best to make our community a better place for all of us to live and work. And I'm not just talking about the people in the city, on the, on the city council. I'm talking about the residents of our community as well. Because they chose to be here, so we want to, we want to include everybody. Enough of that, and I just, just to really wrap up really quick, again, thank you for the street department for getting the street cleaned. I didn't hear any complaints today, which was really good, and I love it. But we have another wave coming, so hang on, get your heavy coats out because it's gonna get cold. And the last item that I want to just, I want to give a shout out to Gaila Paulman. I drove by down Main Street this morning, and I'm not sure I was out that, why I was out that early, but she was out there shoveling the sidewalk in front of the vacant farmer's begin, farmer's building that we just talked about. There's nobody there to talk, there's nobody to do it, you know, so she's out there doing it without a coat, I might add, but I didn't stop and give her any golf about that. But you know, that's what neighbors do in a community. We help each other. And if we can all start doing that around here, I think we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a better, better city to, to live in. And that's all I've got. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to the regular session of the Hampton City Council.
So moved.
Good coast by Mr. Greif, Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned? Thank you.